Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City of Palm Coast Special Budget Hearing. Today is Wednesday, September 24th, 2025. It's 5:15 PM. We're in the John Nett's Community Wing of City Hall. If you, I'm calling this meeting to order. If you could, please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and a short moment of silence.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If you have any devices, please silence them. Ms. Cook, if you please call a roll.
Mayor Norris.
Here.
Vice Mayor Pontieri.
Present.
Councilmember Gimbaro.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll begin this session with public participation. Jeannie, you got anything to say?
I didn't expect to be the only one here. Jeannie Duarte, today is not a day to simply approve budgets, but more of a deadline for departments to bring forward their final drafts for approval. Some, if not most, of these budget increases are excessive and unreasonable. We have yet to see much resistance, if any, to these department budget increase requests. As district representatives, whether elected or appointed, it is not your position to simply comply or compromise, as two of you have already admitted you do. I understand that our acting city manager has publicly stated how proud she is of this year's budget, but I assure you, it is far from anything to be proud of. I urge you to vote from your own knowledge and your own conscience, and not from compromise just to get things passed. And I do have an issue with the Southern Rec being the location for the Charter Review Committee meetings. Thank you.
Jeannie, don't go away. What's the issue with the Southern Rec Center?
I'm concerned that it's not going to be monitored as far as videotaped or audiotaped. Here, at least you have the equipment. It's being audiotaped here. There, it might just be in the dark. And it's for public over there versus the committee itself here.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Seeing no one come forward, we'll bring you back to the dais. I'm assuming no one has any follow-ups.
Mayor, just for clarification, the meeting for the Charter Review Committee, it's a public town hall style. We don't record those. We didn't record any of your town halls. It's not a official Charter Review Committee meeting that's hosted here. And we are trying very hard to make sure that a public meeting is held in each district.
Got it. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, we'll move on to Presentation One, the final proposed fiscal budget year 2025-2026. Helena, Ms. Ragsdale, go right ahead.
Good evening, Mayor. City Council, Gwen Ragsdale, your Budget and Procurement Manager. So tonight, we look at your final proposed fiscal year 2026 budget, the five-year capital improvement plan, TRIM, and next steps with the start of the fiscal year 2026 proposed budget. There have been no changes since your first public hearing on September 10, or, yes, September 10. So the total fiscal year 2026 budget for the city is 696.4 million. This is an increase of 65.2% from your fiscal year 2025 adopted budget. This includes the general fund accounting for 67 million, or 9.7% of your total budget, at a millage rate of 4.0893. The general budget, fund budget, was reviewed with council at the July 8th, July 15th, and August 26th workshops in detail. Your proprietary funds account for 69%, which include the Information Technology Enterprise Fund, Building Permits Fund, Collection and Sanitation Fund, Stormwater Management Fund, Capital Projects Fund, and Water Waste Water Fund. These fund budgets were presented to council in detail on July 22nd, August 12th, and the 26th. The Internal Services Fund account for 4.4%, including the Emergency Communications Fund, Facilities Maintenance Fund, Fleet Management Fund, Health Insurance Fund, and the Information Technologies Internal Services Fund. These fund budgets were presented to council in detail on August 12th and the 26th. Your Capital Projects Fund accounts for 14.4%, which include the Capital Projects Fund, the Fire Impact Fee Fund, Transportation Impact Fee Fund, Town Center Transportation Impact Fee Fund, and the Recreation Impact Fee Fund. These funds were presented to council in detail at the August 12th and 26th workshops. The Special Revenue Funds account for 2%, which include the Streets Improvement Fund, the State Road 100 Community Redevelopment Agency Fund, the Community Development Block Grant Fund, the Old Kings Road Special Assessment Fund, Special Events Fund, Neighborhood Stabilization Fund, and Police Education. These funds were presented in detail to council at the August 12th and 26th workshops. Are there any questions?
Ma'am?
Mr. Barrif. Let's go right ahead. Okay. Well, again, I just want to say thank you, you and all of our department heads, for all the hard work in putting this budget together. I just wanted to highlight because recently, in one of our recent local publications, there was, you know, the headline was 65%, you know, increase in the budget. And, you know, the general fund, which is at 67,601,395 dollars, that's where our millage comes from, right? That's our tax base and how we fund it. But the reason for that increase is because this council has chosen to invest in our infrastructure in a way that we haven't done in the recent past. And I think it's just really important to make that distinction. So out of the 67.6 million out of our general fund that we're going to vote on the millage here in a little bit, 600, we're investing into our infrastructure 629 million dollars. And so I think that's critically important. I'm proud of this council to have, you know, had the very detailed discussion and made the hard choices. And we prioritized as to what, why it's important moving forward. And it was, you know, we listened to our residents as part of the process. So it's a big budget. We've got big things to accomplish. And, you know, just wanted to say thank you for all your hard work. And thanks for this council making those hard decisions moving forward.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
If I may, I just had a question. And I'm sorry, I meant to ask this last budget meeting. Do we have the number that the line item, what the line item utility capital fund was in last year's budget?
Utility capital, right? You give me one second. So your Water Waste Water Capital Fund adopted budget for 2025 was 83 million, and your proposed 2026 is 326 million.
Right. So to your point, Councilman Gimbaro, that makes up your entire percentage increase, right? So the rest of our budget, despite all of the things that we were able to do, add deputies, put money into our fire stations, put money into our pension, put money into the YMCA, their economic development incentives. Thank you, Councilman Miller, for pointing that out. Despite all of that, really, the bulk of our increase is only in Water and Waste Water Utility Capital Fund. So the rest of our budget has largely stayed flat, if not gone down maybe. I mean, I, you know, we'd have to run the numbers. But if you take out the, you know, if you do the math and you take out the utility, water and wastewater utility capital fund monies, that brings you down to a budget of 370 million. Last year's budget was 421 million. So, you know, other than the Water and Waste Water Utility Capital Fund, which was necessary infrastructure for all of the reasons we've already stated, it is a very conservative budget. So I appreciate you bringing that up, Councilman Gimbaro, because I read the article and was less than thrilled. because I read the article and was less than thrilled about the highlight. So again, I do want to commend staff and council for this year's budget. Thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Councilman Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a question, Helena, about how, from an accounting standpoint, this will work. So we have this 326 million in the Utility Capital Fund due to the bonds, correct? Most of it, right? The increase. And so as projects start coming online and we're doing transfers in order to pay for those, how will those be reflected on future budgets?
So you will see the project expenditures within the utility capital projects. So, and then your unspent funds, right? Because we're taking out the bond as one issue. Whatever's left at the end of the year will then be appropriated to continue those projects or for projects that were set to start in fiscal year 27.
And so when it goes to this, the project fund, so to speak, will that be a net, so we'll see a debit from one and then a credit to the other? So it'll be a net zero on next year's budget, right?
So you will see, so you will see the bond this year for '26, right? And then you will see it as appropriated fund balance, whatever's left, for '27 and for '28 because the expenditure period is between '26 and '28.
I just, so in order to, what we're talking about capturing, you know, the cost of these bonds and why that looks like this huge increase, if we use 20% of those bonds, then next year, it'll still appear to be,
Yes.
you know, 240 million dollars and then the next year as we use it. So in the end, we're not going to be spending 280 million dollars in this budget. It'll carry forward over multiple budgets. Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood how that'll look so that, you know, to me, you know, obviously, there's accounting principles that I'm not savvy in. But to me, that gives the appearance that it's being spent multiple times over multiple years because of that. And so I just wanted to understand what that looks like going forward. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Helena, you and I had that discussion a little earlier about the 5 million we're getting from the state. And I'd like to, an explanation. Will we be able to reduce that bond by 5 million dollars when that money hits? That's my question.
So we haven't really finalized what the final amount of the bond is going to be. If those, if the 5 million was originally allocated to be paid from bond proceeds, which I'm not sure without looking at the detail, then you would have that option.
So, because you know, you know I'm adverse to debt. So if we can reduce on the taxpayers, if we can reduce that debt of that bond by 5 million dollars, I think that's a win for us, so.
I'm not sure if it was scheduled to be paid with bond proceeds. I don't know if Carl knows that.
Carl, do you have an answer on that?
If those two projects were part of the projects that we used in order to justify the bonds?
One of the appropriations was for the AWT conversion, and that was in the second bond series. So that one specifically was not part of the first bond. The equalizer tank, again, was not, was an add-on after the fact. So it wasn't part of the initial bond. We do have an equalizer tank at the plant going as part of the construction. This was a secondary one out in the system that we saw appropriation for. So they aren't replacing bond money. They're additional projects that we saw appropriations on.
So we're not going to be able to reduce our debt by 5 million dollars?
No, unless projects come in under cost or whatnot.
Or we reduce the project scope.
That's a bummer. All right, thank you, Carl.
Thank you, Carl.
Anything else? You got something else, Helena?
Yes. So next, we will update you on the Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan. There have been no changes since the first public hearing on September 10th. This is a summary look at the Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan. The fiscal year 2026 final budget accounts for 471.8 million. These projects were reviewed with council in detail over the budget process at the July 22nd, August 12th, and 26th workshops. And if you have any further questions, Carl would be glad to come back up and answer them.
Anyone? Carl, you got a reprieve on that one?
Okay, so we will now look at your proposed millage rate. The rollback rate is 4.0035. The tentative millage rate is 4.0893.
Hold on a second, Helena. We got the presentation. We had the recess and then due to State Road 100 or?
Not yet.
No. This is still in the presentation.
Okay, all right. Old man's over here is trying to tell me what to do. Okay, go right.
So the rollback rate is 4.0035. The tentative millage rate is 4.0893. The budget as presented tonight assumes a millage rate of 4.0893. We are proposing that council adopt the rate of 4.0893. So our next steps tonight are to adopt the final State Road 100 CRA budget for fiscal year 2026, then adopt the final millage rate, and adopt the final budget for fiscal year 2026. We have set up the fiscal year 2026 budget preparation link on the city's website as in previous years. This is where all our presentations and supporting documentation are located. And this concludes our presentation.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further questions from the council? No further questions? We will open up for a quick public comment. You got something, Jeannie?
Jeannie Duarte, I am a little concerned about there being any appropriated fund balance left within a year or two and what's going to prevent them from coming back next year or the year after and saying, oh, well, we underscored ourselves. We need 25 more million dollars. This is an outrageous amount of money and I don't appreciate that it's being done for wastewater improvements that were not brought to the public by referendum. Also too, I would request you consider the rollback rate for millage. As Governor Ron DeSantis stated, if you're not going down and you're remaining the same or going up, you're taxing people on unrealized gains. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any follow-ups from the council? Okay, now we're going to recess the city council, reconvene the State Road 100 Corridor CRA Board. Okay. I'm gaveling in this session, the State Road 100 Corridor CRA. Item two. Okay. The CRA 100 Corridor Community Redevelopment Agency Board hereby proposes to adopt the budget with a total appropriation expenditures and reserves of $3,336,344. Can we get a motion to?
Move to approve.
Second.
We got a second. Any discussion? No discussion by the city council. Jeannie, you got anything to say on the CRA 100? Okay, we'll bring it back to the dais.
One second, Mr. Mayor. You opened public comment and now you closed public comment. Just for the record.
Close public comment. Okay, no further discussion from the council. Ms. Cook, could you call the vote?
Vice Mayor Pontieri.
Yes.
Councilmember Gimbaro.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Mayor Norris.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, we're going to adjourn the State Road 100, State Road 100 Corridor CRA Board, and reconvene the city council. We're back in session as a city council. We're going to move along to resolutions. Resolution three, resolution 2025 XX, adopting the millage rate for the fiscal year 2025-2026. Okay, actions by me, the mayor. This is all scripted. The City of Palm Coast proposes to levy a millage rate of 4.0893 mils. This is an increase of 2.14% from the rollback rate of 4.0035 mils. Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We're right, we're doing right, right? We're all right, right now, right? We got a second, okay? We will open this.
Mr. Mayor, I've got, I've got some comments before.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Public comments. So one of the many benefits of having many meetings and two reads of this budget cycle is for important topics like our budget. It allows those of us that serve on this council the opportunity to continuously receive information right up to the final approval. And so over the past several weeks, I've received significant amount of input from our residents. We've seen our unemployment numbers climb to 5.4%. We've seen critical statistics outlining that over 39% of our residents are not able to pay their rent. We've seen a local employer make a business decision that will reduce 300 manufacturing jobs from our community. And we're seeing the slowing down of home sales. And we're seeing the opportunity for the American dream of owning a home is becoming more and more out of reach and unaffordable. And I'll speak more to this later at the end of the meeting during my comments. Given the difficult decisions that we have made to invest in our infrastructure projects, and we all agree they were difficult decisions, and the current economic trends of the last 60 days, I think that our residents deserve a little bit of a financial break. And I know we looked at the millage rate of 4.093 being that little bit of a break, but, you know, things have changed. And it's for these reasons that I can only support the rollback rate of 4.0035. Thank you.
Okay, we have, have we had a motion yet?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We actually skipped the step there. Yeah, I flubbed it. So this is, step three is us adopting the millage rate. So I'm, Helena, I'm getting back on track. Are you good? I opened it up, the public comment. I'm supposed to bring it back and then we're supposed to do a motion. That's what it says in the script. Okay, so I will go, I'm going to go from here, okay? The city, are you good?
We didn't do public comment.
Yeah, I did open it up. We brought it back.
No.
No, that was for the.
My bad. Did you have something to say, Jeannie? We opened up the public comment. We just did, because Marcus said.
That was for the CRA.
Okay.
I want to thank him for, Mr. Gimbaro, for stating that because it's so true. We are suffering out there and everything's going up. Our pockets are getting hit and now the FPLE wants, or Florida, what is that? Electric wants to get involved as well as far as raising our bills. Our water bills are crazy, so we do need the rollback. As the citizens here, you all live here or should live here, we need the rollback. So I appreciate you bringing that up and supporting that. And I want you all to consider doing the rollback rate rather than, and even Ron DeSantis, you know, our governor, Ron DeSantis supports bringing it back, rolling it back. We need to cut somewhere and I haven't seen any cuts. So you all are struggling, choking everybody out, and people are wanting to sell their homes. And they're not selling. So they're going to be foreclosing on their homes, they're going to be short selling their homes. You really need to consider what you're doing. And having so much of the infrastructure being done now, 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 and pushing this when you should have been pushing to maintain and then all of a sudden, all this new development with our infrastructure, the wastewater treatment, the way it's being done, that's something that we shouldn't have had to endure right now, the way it's being proposed. And it's hitting our generation hard. And we're not going to be leaving anything to our future generations because of this. So consider, all these, all these departments should have been cut back. Everybody should have been cutting back this year, not approving all of these budget increases throughout all the departments. That's all I've been seeing are budget increases. And we, as citizens, deserve a cutback, or not a cutback for ourselves. And that's what it's all been for ourselves. Everybody else is getting raises except we're not. So I appreciate that. Thank you so much. And please consider that when you're voting.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else for public comment? We'll bring it back to the dais. Any follow-ups?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes, go right ahead, Vice Mayor.
Helena, if we did the rollback rate, how much would we need to cut from our budget?
That would be approximately another million dollars.
Okay. Councilman Gimbaro, what are your proposed cuts?
Well, you know, I've brought all sorts of opportunities for savings to this council. We could have sold a golf course. We could have done a bunch of different other things that would have allowed us to even out, you know, on that cut, so.
Even if we sold the golf course, that wouldn't have happened until maybe next year. So what are your other savings? What, because we can't just, you don't get to just throw out a proposed rollback without coming to this council with the actual solution. That's a tagline. That's not a solution.
It's my position. Thank you.
It's a hollow position, Councilman.
Okay, if we want to get to the four, you said 1 million dollars, Helena?
Approximately 1 million dollars.
And how much, okay, we did, we did the 2%, the 2% cost of living allowance, right? That's in the budget?
That is correct.
Okay, and then we're doing another 3% for targeted pay raises?
Up to 3%.
And that's 1.5 million dollars? That's 1.5 million dollars. So you could cut, you could cut a million dollars out of that, go with 500,000 dollars in targeted pay raises, pay raises for deserving employees within the city. That's your million dollars right there, Councilman.
Can you say that again?
We have, we did the 2% cost of living allowance. That's baked in, right, Helena?
That is included in your budget, yes.
Included in the budget. We got 1.5 million dollars that's going to a 3% targeted pay raises. We could scale back a million dollars of that and go with 500,000, 500,000 dollars as far as pay raises. That's, that's the solution. If you want to, if you want to rollback, just off the top of my head, there's other things, you know, there's other things that's going to be going on in this budget that I'm not happy with. And a lot of you know that. So that's, that's your choice. If that's the council, if that's what you want to do, we can do it that way. And I have no problem with that.
Do we have a motion on the table on this?
No, not, not, there's no motion.
That went away.
Yeah, that's no motion, yeah.
So I guess, well, city manager, we did dedicate 1 million dollars to the YMCA out of this year's budget, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, but that's in your.
That's the capital.
Correct.
Okay.
That's not general fund.
The other thing that we put over a million dollars to were the economic incentives. We could also cut that in half. Economic development incentives.
That's 1.2, is it?
1.2.
1.3, I believe.
1.3?
1.1 of it is being funded with appropriated fund balance from the general fund.
So it's still general fund money. My only hesitancy with, we already did go with a lower percentage raise in order to better accommodate the budget. We saw in our risk management assessment that we just got back that retaining employees is already a challenge. We currently have a salary survey ongoing. I'm hesitant to cut in that regard, knowing that that's already a risk and they're in the middle of that survey. So I just, that's a concern for me.
You could split the difference, drop 500,000 from each.
That's, I would, I would be more on board with that. I just don't know what that looks like across the board, city manager.
I mean, it's an all or nothing. It would not be fair to employees to, to do that. So we either give our merit program or we don't.
Why would it, why would it not be fair to the employees? If you're, if you're targeting.
It's, right, it's a performance-based system. And so each person is evaluated on their performance. So it's either we have the program or we don't have the program. It's up to 3%. The directors have the discretion to award the employees based off performance.
So if we did up to 2% of a performance?
I, I don't have the numbers on top of my head. I mean, this is the final budget hearing and, you know, we weren't prepared to run those types of calculations this evening.
Yeah, this is really unfair to the staff to do this now. The better time to do this would have been the last hearing, but here we are. So I think we owe the discussion some deliberation. City manager, what are the other, so we know we had 1.3 in economic development incentives. We've got the, we'll say 1.5 in salary raises. What are the other items from general fund?
It was about 700,000 dollars for the fire collective bargaining agreement. There were minor increases in the, we moved facilities to, from non-departmental into the different department budgets, but there are no huge increases within the general fund budgets.
Yeah, there's not, I mean, there's not a lot of, there's not pork in this budget. There just isn't.
I mean, my position here is that this is already a lean budget plus a couple key things.
things we decided to fund, which was economic development, you know, some other possible things, the YMCA, but that's not general fund money. So, you know, if, if we're doing that, we're cutting services somewhere, right? The, the level of service is gonna drop. We're gonna tell employees that they're not gonna get a raise this year, you know, that most people, I think, expect, you know, as long as they're performing, and this is performance-based.
Performance-based, that's-
So, to me, it creates an atmosphere that we're gonna have employees that don't want to be here, that don't feel like they're being rewarded for the, the hard work that they've done, the high performers, the hard work that they're done. So, what are we gonna be left with? Employees that don't feel like working hard anymore because they're not gonna get a pay raise for it? I think that's, you know, in economic terms, that's, that's bad, right? And I get that, you know, inflation has caused things to be tighter for everybody. That goes for the city as well. And I feel like this is a pretty lean budget, and we picked a couple targeted things to improve upon, namely, economic development, because we think that that will pay dividends in the long term in terms of our tax, tax base, so that we don't have to scrimp for pennies every time we do a budget. So, are we gonna invest in it or are we not? That's the question.
So, I'm glad you used that word, invest, because that's exactly what these dollars are going to. We're investing in our people based on good performance, and we're investing on economic development, which we know we will have an ROI for. So, that's exactly what these are. So, I turn back to you, Councilman Gambaro, in hearing that these are the areas that we would have to cut. What do you propose?
Hold on just a second. As far as, as far as the, the economic incentives, and this is primarily for the promenade, correct? Trying to get interested small businesses to move into those facilities and help them set up and get going. What, what, are we looking at that facility, that whole building being done within, before the end of this fiscal year?
Well, Mayor, the economic development incentives have not been approved by city council yet, so we just have money that's set aside. And Helena has mentioned that that's being used by appropriated fund balance, so it's not anything to do with your current millage rate setting. And if we look back and recall the August 26 budget workshop where all of the funds were given for the general fund expenditure, there's $2.1 million for the Flagler County Sheriff's contract, there's $1.5 million for the fire department, there's $1.1 million for economic development, and there's an increase in streets maintenance, and there is an increase in parks maintenance. But that's, that's where the increases are. Other departments were negative increases or standard contractual increases.
I think it's worthwhile in asking, too, you know, in terms of a median household, what is this, what does this difference in millage mean, right? Is it $200? Is it $80? Is it $40? What is it?
$25.
So, we're talking about giving back $25 and cutting economic development or cutting targeted performance-based raises?
That's a year, by the way, $25.
What about the healthcare discussion about new employees not having the PPO? Was that, I think that was around a million-dollar savings if we, if it was an HMO instead of a PPO?
That was going to the health savings plan, right?
It was a planned design change, but we've already had open enrollment, and employees have already selected their plans, and we've already issued contracts with our health insurance companies.
Based on the direction of council?
Yes.
Councilman Gambaro, would you please answer my question? I want to know, because this is, this happens every single year, and it's always, let's do the rollback, because that is a good political position to take. But, but looking at the employees, the directors of whom are sitting in the back of the room, and telling them, go back to your folks and tell them, you're not getting your performance-based raise, that's the hard part. Saying, I'm gonna rollback is easy. I want to know, sir, what you would cut.
Let's sell the golf course. Listen, if you guys don't agree with me, don't vote for it, but I'm not changing my position.
Golf course isn't gonna happen. So, can I get a motion to approve? Well, wait a second. A motion to approve the current millage rate at 4.0893 mils?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve?
Second.
Got a second. Okay. We've already had public discussion? We're good? All right. Can we call the vote, and then I'll do the announcement of the millage rate? Ms. Cook?
Vice Mayor Pontieri?
Yes.
Councilmember Gambaro?
No.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Norris?
Yes.
The motion passes 4 to 1.
Thank you. The city of Palm Coast, that's it. I'm off on that. So, it carries, let me see. City of Palm Coast, that we've already done that. We've got the, that's it, right? We're done on that. We're straight. Okay. You guys got me all flustered up here. Okay, we're gonna move on to, we're gonna move to item four, adoption of final budget for fiscal year 2025, 2026. The city of Palm Coast proposes to adopt the budget with a total appropriated expenditures and reserves at $696,444,327. And I have to open it up for public comment. Ms. Dorte?
I don't have anything next to say.
No, no one's coming forward for public comment. Okay, we'll bring it back to the dais. Okay, can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We got a second. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Ms. Cook, call the vote.
Vice Mayor Pontieri?
Yes.
Councilmember Gambaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Norris?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, the city clerk, the city clerk must forward a copy of the resolution adopt, adopting the final millage to the property appraiser, the tax collector in the state of Flor, state of Florida Department of Revenue within three days. You good with that, Ms. Cook?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, we're moving on to item five, resolution 25, 2525, approving the fiscal year 2026 fleet replacement purchase program and associated purchase orders for fleet, for fleet vehicles and equipment.
Mr. Mansell could not make it tonight. He unfortunately caught the bug from his little two-year-old, so he's at home, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, city council.
Does anyone have any questions regarding the resolution? I do not.
This went down, correct? Didn't, didn't fleet, wasn't there reduction in fleet?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I think, I remember Matt mentioning.
12%, I think.
Yeah. Okay, so, can I, we have to have a motion to approve? Motion to approve?
Move approval of the resolution?
Second.
Got a second. Any further discussion? Open it up for public comment. Ms. Lynn Stevens, do you have anything to say? We'll close public comment, bring it back to the dais. Any follow-ups? Ms. Cook, please call the vote.
Vice Mayor Pontieri?
Yes.
Councilmember Gambaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Norris?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, we'll move on to item H, public participation. Seeing no one come forward, I'll bring it back to the dais. We'll move on to the discussion of matters not on the agenda by the city council. Councilman Gambaro, you had something?
I do, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I just wanted to report back from the AHAQ, the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. And I know that we have directed an accessory dwelling unit survey that is currently underway in support of our land development code. And I just wanted to ask for consensus from, from this council to see if we can get this survey over to the AHAQ for them to give us some feedback on it, just kind of as an extra set of eyes before they bring that survey back to us for final presentation for the council.
Yeah, sounds good. No one has a problem with it?
Okay, and I just wanted to highlight, thank you, I just wanted to highlight that one of the big items of discussion from the meeting was impact fee waivers. And in support of, you know, new construction, that was in the form of, you know, that was, that fell under the auspices of, you know, an affordable home. And in an effort to facilitate homeownership and affordability, and in line with what the county commission already had, was doing, and I wasn't tracking this, Commissioner Carney shared with me that they were, and one of the staff members went into it. I'd like to recommend to this council, review the policies that the county already has on the books and, and, you know, for us to decide whether or not these policies are a good fit for our city. But I just, you know, as we went through the impact fees discussion, I think a lot of us were concerned about the rack and stack of, you know, what those impact fees would be, but this might be an opportunity to, to look at potentially, you know, providing some relief from the impact fees that would be in line with, with our efforts to provide affordable housing. So, just something to consider. The AHAQ will continue to work it, and, and, you know, I think it might be worth, you know, reviewing what the commissioner already has.
We could, we could review, but I'm very hesitant to do anything with cut impact fees for affordable housing.
Yeah, I won't support that. I mean, I think with the rates that we passed, we already considered affordable housing. Again, you know, I'm happy to review what they're doing just for my edification, but I won't be in support of that.
Yeah, I would, I would, I'd like to see the information, you know, so, so we can see what they're doing, for sure.
So, you have consensus on us reviewing the information. I have no problem with that. You good with that, Mr. Sullivan?
Yep.
Okay.
That's all I had, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the council? Anything?
Anything? I just wanted to say that I attended the state legislative program meeting on, last week. Mayor, you gave your presentation. Appropriately, there is a booklet, I think we've all received. I always have some problems on priorities, but I think that, based on what Senator Leake said, and he, he's consistent, saying that you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to provide money, you know, if you're gonna come, if they're gonna appropriate money towards you, you're gonna have to have your, he hopes, 50% buy-in, but that was clear. And I just thought it went pretty well, the, the overall meeting, and I think we got our priorities in there.
Mayor, I did have something.
Go right ahead.
Thank you for bringing that up, Councilman Sullivan. And Mayor, I heard you did a wonderful job, so thank you for representing us there.
Thank you. It was a different air this year than it was last year. I don't know. It was, it, there was a different air in the room. So, hopefully, and our biggest, our biggest ask is right out here, well, right over there, that choke point, we need it, that's $30 million. And I'm hoping that they can help us out with that, because right now, that is, that is not working out there for us.
Well, we're asking what they told us to ask for. Resiliency, infrastructure, those things, not pet projects, special things that are only for us. These are things that our residents need. Clean water, wastewater, roads.
Yes, sir. You got anything, Councilman Miller? You got any follow-ups? Last, Mayor?
I just have something, sorry, that I forgot about. A couple of things. So, we've had three traffic fatalities on our roads since Monday. Please, 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 folks, drive safe. I know, I talked to City Manager and Commander Woodward. We're going to, there's some things in the works to help with our road safety, so looking forward to some of those strategies being deployed. But just a shout out to our residents to please drive safe out there. Also, Live Like Cameron was this past weekend. There were a lot of folks out there raising money and running and walking the 5K for children with cancer in our community, so I just want to thank them all for going out. There is a Kiwanis bowling tournament to raise money for other young folks in our community. And during the meeting that Kiwanis had last week or the week before, they issued a challenge to all of our boards, so the school board, the county board, and the city board, to all get a bowling team together and see who will rise to the top. So, I told them that I would do a shout out. I'm more than willing to embarrass myself at the bowling alley to raise money for Kiwanis. So, if any of my colleagues would like to join me for-
I'm in.
Awesome, I love it. And then I issued this challenge to our counterparts at the county, and also the school board, if you all want to put together a team-
And lose.
And, thank you, and lose. UCF is 3-0, I'm just, I'm just saying.
In bowling?
I'll take whatever, dude. Anyway, so, so I would, I would, I would be happy to take names of anybody who would like to form a team with their boards, or anybody else in the community. Come out, bowl for Kiwanis. It's such a fantastic organization for the young kids in our community. So, please contact me, email me, call me, text me, Facebook message me, whatever you want to let me know you want to bowl for Kiwanis. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. If you, if you can get, if you can get Kendra to get it on the counter, I'll participate. We had-
Thank you.
We had like a fun day at my last unit before I retired. I hadn't bowled in like-
Was that the mandatory fun day?
Yeah, mandatory fun day. And I got up and I bowled a 223, and I hadn't bowled in like two, 10 years. So, I was on it that day, but if it's my counter, I'm more than well, I'll, I'll be there. Nothing else? Along the lines of what the vice mayor said, this is, this is what I saw yesterday. I was getting off the exit at Matanzas, and I take a left-hand turn to go down to the L section. This kid comes across Matanzas, and everybody knows that's a dangerous intersection. This kid comes down Matanzas, going towards the high school downhill. He is sitting on his handlebars of his bike, riding it downhill towards the school. So, if that's your kid, I would take very serious action. It was quite shocking. City Attorney, you got anything?
No, Mr. Mayor.
City Manager, any follow-ups? We are-
Mr. Mayor, I do have one real quick.
Yes, sir.
The 30th baby box dedication, that's at 3:00 PM. So, look forward to seeing everybody there. The baby box dedication to Fire Station 25.
Is that on our calendar? Okay.
It's on the counter. I'll try to be there.
Motion to adjourn.